Welcome to Eustace City Hall. This is a regular city commission meeting of the Eustace City Commission. It is Thursday, June 18th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Due to Governor's executive order, we do have one Commissioner join us by telephone tonight. Commissioner Alaberty will be joining us on phone. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone that would like to join us for the pledge and for the invocation to please stand. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our community. Father, we ask now that you just take our country, wrap your arms of love around it, heal our country, Father, as we go through devastating times. We ask that you just be with us tonight as we make decisions for our community, that you open our hearts and help us make the right decisions that will take us forward. It's in your name that we pray. Amen. Commissioner Moore, will you join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go ahead and officially call our meeting to order. Mary, is there a form present proper notice being given?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Mr. Nyberg, any agenda updates?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. Commissioners before us, we have the approval of minutes from the March 18th, 2020 City Commission workshop and the May 21st, 2020 regular city commission meeting. What's the will of this commission?
I move for approval of March 18th and May 21st minutes.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Alaberty.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye. Next, we come down to presentations. I was not able to go to our last Eagle Scout recognition here in Eustis, but our Vice Mayor was. So, we have a presentation that I'm going to let Emily go ahead and present.
Thank you. We did have, unfortunately, Andrew could not be with us. However, we did have the certificate for him, and I was very proud of Andrew, and I enjoyed attending the ceremonies. He was awarded the designation of Eagle Scout by Troop 250, and he organized a music library for the Eustis High School Band. I guess it was quite an accomplishment, the way they described it. And he and 38 volunteers that he coordinated built bookcases, they sanded and stained them and put all the hundreds of pieces of music into order in the library that they had built. They worked a total of 298 hours over 10 days to complete the project. So, at this time, the city would like to take the opportunity to thank Andrew for his dedication to the community and his accomplishments as an Eagle Scout, as well as a super achiever, an Arrow of Light Award winner. I think Andrew has a great future ahead of him. He's really into the community and into his education, so I'm proud of him, and I'm glad that we have this opportunity to recognize him.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Andrew, thank you. Congratulations, and we as a city and your city commissioner, very proud of you. Thank you, sir. Next, we come to audience to be heard. If you would like to speak about something that is not on our agenda tonight, this is your opportunity. If you'd like to come forward, and when Mr. Nyberg calls you, to come to the microphone and at least give your name, please. Mr. Nyberg.
Daniel DiVonzo.
Good evening, Daniel.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and friends. My name's Daniel DiVonzo. I'm a local business owner here, and I do live in Eustis, but not within the city limits. First of all, I just want to tell you that tonight, the CRA embarked on what I believe is going to be a very defining moment for the future of Eustis. I also want to let you know that there is continuing interest in our area with regard to development, especially with the connector coming in from Orlando, as we know, the Oak High River Parkway and other opportunities for quick travel, and also just our geographical location and uniqueness, and of course, Lake Eustis itself. So, I'm pretty encouraged. I talked to a lot of people. I just want to let you know, you know, the five-story building and also my funding on the marina had been suspended. The five-story building's been released, and so now has the Eustis Marina. So, those are good things to know, and I will tell you, they watch numbers. They're all about the decimal points and the commas. And so, they would not be moving ahead if it weren't for absolute confidence in what the future holds for our specific location. If there was anything, oh, and also, I did want to let you know, next week, I'm going to have a representative is coming into Eustis for an international company that's actually looking to establish their national headquarters in Florida. And because of, they knew me, they're coming to actually look at Eustis. So, we talked with Tom a little bit about fiber optics in the area, but anyway, that's just a side note. What I really wanted to bring to your attention is, now that we're moving ahead in a pretty dynamic way, I believe, I think it's really essential that we start to address the corridor, Highway 19 from 441 to downtown. The state of Florida, I believe if we unify and put some pressure on it, whatever level, including our county representatives, I think Eustis is long overdue for a renovation of the streetscape. I know that we keep kind of keeping up the islands a little bit, but if you look at the lighting, if you look at the sad state of the trees and the sidewalks, I mean, considering what we're trying to accomplish downtown, it really is a focal point, and it's something that needs to be addressed. So, I'd like to keep it in mind, keep it in mind, and hopefully, on any future workshops or if you have an opportunity to create a discussion with the staff, that we could potentially move ahead with a vision in mind that, you know, Eustis needs to be on the map. We don't need to be getting the seconds all the time. I hope you guys have a great night, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Brian.
That's all the cards I have.
Brian, come on up, sir. And I know you're probably going to do it, but the letter that you sent us, thank you very much. I enjoyed reading it.
And I want to thank the commission for accepting that and receiving it. I hope you all have it. But I do want to read it for my audience, because, you know, sometimes we don't get a chance to share, you know, and it really hit home. You know, just as we said, the pledge of allegiance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You know, so I just wanted to read this, you know, for the commission, and I, you know, and I thank you for this time. There's an old cliche in the black community that says, "You're preaching to the choir." As cliches go, we hear them so much that we tend to, they tend to become commonplace, and we forget they have real meaning, and that's what brings me here. Often, current events happen around us, and we have endless discussions with friends and family members about them. Some events bring outrage. We agree that something must be done, then we go our separate ways, hoping somebody is going to speak up and do something right for justice. I guess it's my time, and you guys are going to be my choir that I preach tonight. We're living in very trying times today, and if you're black, brown, poor, elderly, or uninsured, these trying times carry a lot more weight. COVID-19 infections and death rates are disproportionately higher among African-Americans. Unemployment among black and brown citizens is much higher than our white brothers and sisters. Our seniors are dying in nursing homes separated from their families. These are all very concerning issues that have to be addressed by our public servants and elected officials, but this is not the focus of my concerns at this time. I'm here to talk about injustice in America. We all looked on in disbelief as four Minneapolis, Minnesota, police officers were seen in a video, pinning unarmed, handcuffed, black man on the street next to a police car. As one of the officers stood by, seemingly to assure bystanders were held at bay, the other three officers held this man to the ground, one with his knee on his neck, on the neck of the subdued man for more than eight minutes, as he repeatedly told them he could not breathe. We listened as bystanders begged the officer to allow the man to breathe. We watched as life left that man's body. We saw the man die right before our eyes. We watched in just in disbelief. I have to believe, though, that we all share the pain felt by the family and friends of that man. But you must know that the pain black Americans feel is much deeper than white Americans. Time after time, we see black people being treated starkly different when we encounter police officers. Oftentimes, armed and dangerous white criminal suspects are captured and arrested, then treated humanely. A perfect example of this is the capture and arrest of Dylan Roof. Hours after walking into a Bible study and prayer meeting at Emmanuel AME Church in Charleston, South Carolina, murdering nine members of that congregation after they had welcomed him in and prayed for him. He was captured after fleeing to North Carolina. While in custody, he told the officers, the arresting officers, that he was hungry, so they stopped by nearby Burger King and bought him something to eat. On the other hand, we sometimes witness an incident like that of Kenneth Ross Jr., who was gunned down and murdered in cold blood by Gardena, California Police Sergeant Michael Robbins on April 11th, 2018. Sergeant Robbins used a military-style assault rifle to shoot and kill Kenneth Ross Jr., a mentally disabled 25-year-old black man in broad daylight. It was about 2:30 PM that afternoon, when officers responded to a report of shots fired in the city of Gardena, and a blackmail was responsible. Mr. Ross was in the area about to cross the street when a patrol car approached him. He panicked, began to run, and several police officers began to box him in. Some of the officers started to pursue him on foot with the tasers drawn. Mr. Robbins, I mean Sergeant Robbins, I'm sorry, who was furthest away from the scene, got out of his patrol car, fired two rounds from his assault rifle, hitting Mr. Ross, killing him. Immediately after that murder, the cover-up began. Sergeant Robbins, who was the shooter, ordered all the officers at the scene to turn off their body cameras. One officer did not. That camera captured the search of the lifeless body of Mr. Ross and the backpack that he was carrying. No weapons were found. Reports stated that he appeared to be reaching for a weapon when he was in fact just trying to keep his shorts from falling down while he was running. On November 4th, 2019, more than a year and a half later, the city of Gardena held a community briefing to convince the public the shooting was justified. They withheld actual video footage from all angles that clearly told a different story. Kenneth Ross was charged with the crime, with the crime of assault with a deadly weapon on a police officer after he was killed. The city refused to release the videos of the shooting until after it created its own edited version. LA District Attorney Jackie Lacy declined to hold Sergeant Robbins accountable, finding the shooting justified. I brought these two starkly different, contrasting views to shed light on the action and reaction of the protesters, now not only in Minneapolis, but all over the world. Many of the faces we see among the protesters are white. Right does not come in a color. Right is right, wrong is wrong. I don't condone burning down buildings and looting businesses, but I do hear the calls for justice through these actions of some of these young people. I hear it. I don't condone those negative things. It's time for America to sit up and listen to the voices that cry out for justice. It's time to take the blinders off and the earplugs out. When we take time to look, we can see the pain expressed through the protest. When we stop and really listen, we'll hear the pleas of the oppressed. Black America is listening. We hear the dog whistle, calls to divide. We see the systematic efforts to suppress our vote. We recognize the language from a dark, but not so distant past that's being used today. It's absolutely shameful when the President of the United States tweets out, when the looting starts, the shooting starts, and threatens to unleash vicious dogs on U.S. citizens, expressing their First Amendment right. Once again, it sounds as if the President is giving a green light to proceed with violence. I hope I'm wrong, but I refuse to lie to myself about what I hear and witness when I really take a look. I pray every day for justice. I pray. I pray. I pray. I pray that we seek a better understanding of each other by listening to each other's concerns. I ask that. I pray for fairness. I pray for racial unity, and I pray for our civic leaders and our elected officials. I do. I honestly do. Those who have been placed in positions of authority over others must govern justly. I refuse to sit silent and idle when our leaders allow injustice to grow. We must all demand this from our leaders, regardless of race, creed, or color. If you search the internet and view that body cam video that I was talking about from the Gardena police incident, I'm certain you too would find that the shooting by Sergeant Michael Robbins was far from justifiable, and that decision by the district attorney of Los Angeles County, Jackie Lacy, who happens to be a black woman, is a prime example of injustice. Let's be honest, racism is alive and well in this country. Every time progress is made to stamp it out over on this side, it raises its ugly head over on the other side. The end of slavery brought rise to Jim Crow. Attempts to end Jim Crow laws brought rise to other laws that clearly targeted black Americans and were enforced much more stringently in the black and brown communities. Racism no longer hides under Klansman's hood. It lives in corporate and municipal boardrooms. It lives in law enforcement agencies, and yes, it even lives in the White House. The dying words of Mr. George Floyd and Mr. Eric Garner summed it up best. "I can't breathe." It's time for America, America to catch its breath. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address? Lori?
Lori Barnes, Development Services Director for the City of Eustis. Mayor and Commissioners, I am happy to announce our new senior planner, John Bertrand.
Hi, John.
He comes to us from Tarpon Springs as a senior planner. Prior to that, he was a senior planner for county government in Warren, Virginia. He is also has experience as a junior engineer from Washington State and holds a bachelor's degree in geology. John has accepted the position here and is jumping in with both feet. He's also agreed to study for and sit for the certification exam by the American Institute of Certified Planners.
Outstanding. Would you like to say anything?
Just that, I look forward to working with all of you, and great planning experience here.
Welcome to Eustis. Thank you. Next person. Anybody else want to address the commission? Babe, are you going to come up?
Yes, sir.
Come on now, please.
While he's staying, Mayor, I just checked with Mr. Shepherd. We're going to have to pull item 6.3 from the agenda.
6.3?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
David Sirdar, Fulton Park, Florida. I gave you my address earlier. You know, my father was a principal, same school he went to as a child, from 60 years old. He taught hundreds of people basketball. He didn't go to my ballgames. I played on the college team every time I was out of the line. Land of Lincoln, Abraham Lincoln. You know, we are a human race. I dated a Johnny May Christmas. I voted for Obama. You know, Republican Party really doesn't like people that don't follow laws. The Democrats don't like following people. Hey, you know, my father, 36 years, what does that, 36 years of love and dedication and a school principal. They loved my dad. It was central school. The black neighborhoods in North Chicago came out and massed when they changed it to hard school. My dad, well, my Uncle Larry was on cartoonists. You know, was there a mob, you know, International Secretary, Lake County Educational Secretary's boss's knife. The secretaries are all flappers. You know, I'm praying for America. America's in big trouble right now. I'm praying, well, Eustis, Chamber of Commerce, I'm trying to reach out to, nice little prayers. I work with Jerry Demby. There are leaders out there that work and get things done. There's Senator Backley. He calls me his buddy. I've got a bottle bill over there on the ground. You'd never see him on the ground again. I've got a Bible signed by Nessa Heber to the Grove and Forum. They won't put anything in the papers. You know, I'm part of, well, there's officers that are losing their lives all over the country because people are taking violence in their hands. It's ridiculous. My niece has, from Minnesota, she's going to school there. She's caught the virus. The virus, it's altered, and she had hives all over. She was, couldn't breathe. She had a fever. They took the test the next day, took four, five days. The doc came back negative. She couldn't even get to the phone. You know, it's a human race. I'm worried about. I don't know what other people are worried about. You know, I dated a Johnny May Christmas. I'm just a custodian. I'm a golfer. I have a thank you party in Wisconsin State Golf Society. That's just a game. You know, I got feeding the homeless. Out here, we got a thrift store that feeds them. Well, in Leesburg, they got the Salvation Army building a 50-bed homeless program. There's the First Baptist Church feeding people. You know, I feed people when I came through. You know, I've been to Wildwood. I've been, lately, I got all, you can't believe where I've been. Wildwood in the morning on a Monday, evening at Leesburg. They're going to take a vote on plastic straws. Hey, I've been to Tallahassee. I love to canoe. I work with Jerry Demby's and Buddy Dyer. I've got the pins of the mayor right off the pit, right off meat somewhere, and I've got pins of my uncle, well, my father-in-law, Semper Fi, saw the flag go up on Nene Virginia. We're all going to die. It's what we do while we're living. I've been doing the Martin Luther King thing. There's officers from all over the county, and Orange County, Lake County, Marion County. You know, now they're putting their lives out there. We got to fight drug abuse. You know, there's an assailant out of Ho-Kell that shot David Lyons' son, David Lyons Jr., a football star. And he had a life, but he doesn't anymore. I'm a David. I played football. You know, it's humbling. I've been to Tallahassee. I'm worried about America. I know.
David, we're at your time limit.
I thank you. There's so many agendas. I've been to so many places in the last few weeks, trying to make a difference for our community, for our kids' future. Just went by the school district. I thank you for your time. God bless. God bless America.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to address the commission this evening? Not seeing anybody. We're going to go down now to our consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Is there an item that anyone wants pulled? Not hearing anything. Looking for a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Make a motion to approve. Thank you, sir.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Alaberty. Commissioner Alaberty.
Marie, you there?
Did we lose her?
There's no display on the screen.
I see that.
Let's take a pause real quick and see if we can get Commissioner Alaberty back on the phone.
You have to push a nine. I'd get it.
Nice. Hello?
Hello, did we lose you?
Yeah.
Okay, we're about to take a vote on the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Marie, did you have any questions on the consent agenda at all, ma'am?
No.
Okay. We've already started our roll call, so I think you're up next.
Commissioner Alaberty.
Hello?
Commissioner Alaberty, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can, yes.
She's asking for your vote, yes or no.
Oh, aye.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye. Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir. We have Resolution 2038. This is the only reading, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, authorizing adjustment to the City of Eustis rates for water, wastewater, reclaimed water, to provide for an annual adjustment for ordinance number 1610 to be effective June 1st, 2020. This is Mr. Nyberg.
Aye. Mr. Shepherd.
Aye, Mayor, City Commission. Mike Shepherd, Finance Director.
Oh, my goodness. Unprepared. What we're doing tonight is rate adjustment for the, this year, for water, wastewater, and reclaimed water. Back in 2016, we had a rate study done. It set the motion, rate increases, the first one was 6%, and the other four were going to be 1.7%. This is the final year of that rating study. So, we're getting into the point where the, we're going to have to do another one coming up in the next five, for the next five years, and we're going to be doing that in 2021. The good news is that the City of Eustis has been very diligent in keeping up with rates, and it's very important for the bondholders that they see that we're being diligent and making sure that everything is working well within our system. I just, and I just, that's why rate studies need to be done, and again, we will be accomplishing that in the next, after this year is done. The rates are designed to help make sure that operations are, continue, and that we have the money to replace equipment. We've set up a renewal and replacement fund to make sure that we fund, have the monies available to make the appropriate increase or changes to the system to keep it updated. Okay. We, and again, we have minor, minor items, under 25,000. Anything over 25,000 goes into a five-year plan. The...
Going backwards.
Going backwards. Okay. Okay. All right. This, this is an estimate over the five years for the revenues that we're going to be receiving, and along with the projects that we anticipate are going to be necessary. One of the big projects that you'll see in there is an $8 million increase in the plant, and we're, more than likely, we're going to have to go out and get financing for that. So, the rates will be adjusted so we... Okay. All right, this, this is an estimate over the five years for the revenues that we're going to be receiving, and along with the projects that we anticipate are going to be necessary. One of the big projects that you'll see in there is an $8 million increase in the plant, and we're, more than likely, we're going to have to go out and get financing for that. So, the rates will be adjusted, so we, make sure we can have that available. The, okay. This just gives you the information regarding the, the rate that a new customer will pay for 5,000 gallons of usage, water, wastewater, and then reclaimed water. The next, this next one, all right, that's, that's a, this is a sample of the rates that we're going to be enacting. Attached to your packet is a full schedule, this is just a brief summary for residential. I think we fare fairly well with, with our rates. Leesburg seems to be the only one that may beat us, but we're, we're very, very competitive. But I, Eustis is very competitive with the rates. Let's see. That's it? We, the, the rates have not gone into effect, even though they begin June 1, the first billing happens July 1, because of the, we bill in arrears, so, just for your information on that, okay? Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Shepherd?
Just a question, I know it's, everybody's having a tough, well, not everybody, but a lot of people having a tough time, and yet, I know that this is an increase, but what is the actual effect on the average homeowner in Eustis?
A little, a little over a dollar a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
About, if it's 5,000 gallons, if we give an example of that.
I just wanted to get it on, on here, because everybody understands that's what it is, so it's not, not a tremendous.
It's not a lot.
But I have to admit, I think we have the best water in this whole area, so.
I agree.
I would pay more, because I've been over the areas where the water, the water is good. I've been all over Florida, and I could actually drink from my faucet, so, I, I'm encouraged by this, if it's only going to cost us a dollar more per, per 5,000 gallons, then I'm fine.
Right, it's, I think it's, it's a, it's a great value, people go out and buy a dollar, for a dollar eighty-nine and get a 20 ounce bottle, will get you a lot more than that.
I think sat on a commission where we had to make a decision about the 6% increase, we have to think ahead, and we have to do these little increments so that when the big things come up, we, we are prepared, and I, I appreciate what you put into this report, thank you very much.
I, I think also that people lump their water bill together, but it's really not the water, it's waste, it's sewer, obviously, but also the waste management, garbage fee, so people assume that their water's going up very high, but it's not that, it's all the other things.
Yeah, waste management is also included in there, reclaimed water, if they have irrigation separate, for most people, so we, we try to keep it so that everybody can afford and use what they need, and it, the system is available to everybody.
That's great.
And Karen, you're right, after.
From pretty much the same person, from pretty much the same neighborhood, so I think we have to look at the legality of, you know, they, they have to give their name.
I, I'm going to have to defer to Derek on that, and he's shaking his head, no.
Yes, Commissioner Aliberty, there's a public policy purpose for allowing anonymous tips or anonymous complaints, and it's to encourage them and to not have anyone think there would be retribution if they identify themselves. So unfortunately, at this time, I don't think we could mandate through legislation a requirement that the individual disclose who they are for purposes of code enforcement or crimes or whatever they may proceed, but.
Right.
If we, I mean, we, we could maybe have a caller ID so that if it's the same person making the same complaint every hour of every day, we can give it the weight it deserves, maybe that's a practical solution.
Well, that, that might help. That might help.
Just a couple of questions, I, I can understand what the commissioner's talking about, I know in some cases where we have, there, there's sort of consequences, for instance, when you call in an abuse hotline for a child or disabled adult or senior, there's always those possibilities that you could be anonymous, but obviously, you're, or also should be available to help out whoever's investigating the complaint. What bothers me about this is that it seems as though someone could harass us, or harass myself, anyone in our community, based on, on, on what? There's no, there's no consequences for somebody doing that, and at least in the abuse hotline, if there's an anonymous call and it's a flagrant violation, it doesn't show, we actually could have purged that, 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 that charge, that complaint. I think that, does a city have the ability to manage the aspects of a, of a nuisance or a continuous call about a certain person?
If you, if you can show there's actual malice on the part of the complainant, then that is an exception, you're right.
So who would do that? Would the city decide Mr. John Smith, sorry, that's not a name I should be using now, I guess, but Mr. Johnny Q is doing that, is, is making these calls, and they may be founded, they may be not, so, what does the city have for process?
Well, what we do when we receive a complaint, even if it's a repeated complaint, obviously, we, we look at the complaint, if it's a legitimate violation of the code, we address it according to the policy. Obviously, even if, if malice is involved, if malice is involved and they just don't like their neighbor and they keep complaining about their neighbor, I don't feel we can turn a blind eye to a legitimate code violation. So, so obviously, intent or malice on the complainer's part, obviously can be taken into account, but obviously, the fairest thing that we can do is obviously review it, address it, if it's a legitimate complaint, we address it according to our procedures, if it's not, we tell the individual, we're sorry, there's, there's nothing there, and we're not going to do anything, and, and that's.
But there's got to be some relief for the person who's being, you know, the complaint is about all the time, that's frustrating.
If, if.
I mean, and I guess it's, it's, I'm, I'm just thinking about the commercial we see on Geico, this homeowners association lady comes walking around and just, you know, the mailbox is two inches off, and she cuts it off, and there's no recourse, and I think that's what I'm looking at today, is that, is that unfortunately, we may try our best to do, to meet the code, but we don't meet it, or if we find that somebody's actually maligning, or, or, or using the code to get back at people, that's frustrating for that homeowner, you never know what the next one's going to be.
And if there's, and if, if the individual that has the repeated complaints feels it's harassment, they have, they have recourse through the civil courts.
Okay, but that's the cost of the homeowner.
Yes, it is.
See, that's what I think, if we could, can we legislatively do anything as a commission to streamline that process and make it less destructive, and, and begin to see that maybe a rash of 100 calls might be a little bit too much, or maybe too much, are there recourse?
The only thing I think you could do, because there's an immunity for making complaints to public agencies for public policy purposes, that if you're malicious in doing it and it's false, then you, you don't have that immunity, you can be sued civilly, we could probably impose through the code, if there's malice and if it's false, some kind of misdemeanor penalty like you do if you have used 911, or if you make repeated false claims of a crime that didn't occur, I mean, that's criminally prosecutable, using our resources to pursue false crimes that someone just maliciously made up.
And, and where does the change in the ordinance emanate from? Does it emanate from the state, or is it something we do locally? So could we look at it and see if there's any recourse for someone who's a?
It sounds like we could do a local ordinance.
Yeah, I think that's what I would like to see done.
Derek, could you look into it and bring something back to us?
Yeah, I'll look into it, I mean, there, there are cons to that, who's going to enforce it, and then if you, if we intervene in a neighbor's dispute, I mean, one neighbor may say, yeah, it's false and malicious, I want the police to investigate, and it may not be, but maybe we have a threshold that if a complaint is made over a certain, a number of times, it can trigger it, but I can, I can certainly look into it.
Does that help you, Marie?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I would also like to look at some of our codes.
Okay.
Actually, you know, sit down with, with the committee and look over them.
That, that'll be fine, if you'll get with Mr. Nybert and see if y'all can put something together, and.
Okay.
We can, we can work towards that, okay?
All right.
Because some of our codes may be out there, and they need to be updated.
Okay.
Anything else that you, for a future agenda item?
Um, no, I, I do have a question, or, what are we doing for the 4th of July festivities?
We're going to discuss that under my report.
Okay.
All right, Karen, anything for a future agenda item?
I don't think I have anything, but thank you.
All right. Emily, anything?
Neither do I.
All right.
Bob? Just one, just one, I don't know, I'm not sure where Eustis Heights is, but have you seen in the citrus next door neighbor that someone has bears in Eustis Heights? I was thinking, is Eustis Heights right by the elementary school? So, the, the question was, do we get bear-proof containers, trash containers, do we have that?
We do not, the, the trash containers are provided by the trash, Waste Management. Now, the county got a grant from the state to provide, through their Waste Management Company, some bear-proof containers, so, but we don't have access to that because we're not under, not under their county contract.
I understand that, but would Waste Management use those?
I can, I can reach out to them and see if they have that available, and, and, you know, there may be a charge for it, they may have it available, I'll call and report back to you, or I'll send an email.
I'll give you the gentleman's name?
Okay.
And then you can let him know, because he was going to go out and buy his own, so, and also, I think Mr. Nybert and I, they've been talking about South Bay HOA, the South Bay neighborhood, and I'm going to be meeting with them, it's not an agenda item for the future, but I just wanted to let our commission know that they've asked for me to, to be there and just listen to their concerns about their sewer problems and the city, how it all started, but that was it.
Okay.
South Bay is?
Bay State?
Bay, I'm sorry, South Bay State.
Bay State subdivision, Bay State South subdivision.
On Lake Joanna?
Uh, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, it's all of Abrams.
They're county, right? They're not city.
That's subdivision city.
That's subdivision.
It's in the city, their, their issue is when the subdivision was built, they maintained private, private ownership of the water and sewer system, so now, the system's in bad shape, and they're asking for the city to take over ownership and maintenance.
I'm going to be with them this week, thank you.
Thank you. All right, comments, Marie, any comments, any report you want to give?
Uh, just that I, I got some news today that there are a couple more COVID cases in, oh, one of our institutions, which is not good, um, not, not in the city, but in the county, and so the spread is there. And Orange County just decided to make everybody in public wear face masks, so, to wear the mask, so, I just think we need to be even more vigilant than we have been, and, you know, think about consequences down the road, so.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Commissioner Aliberty was talking about, I think it's, it's an issue, things have changed drastically in the four weeks since we, we met four weeks ago, and we talked about the July 4 celebration, and all of a sudden, life has changed again in Florida. So, from my perspective, I agree with her, I think it's an important thing that we need to discuss. Also, it was great news, we heard yesterday that the statue from, from the statuary in Washington DC is probably not going to be here, it's the Kirby Smith statue, and I want to thank the rest of our commissioners who had signed, along with, I think, 10, along with nine other cities within Lake County, and the county commission's finally going to see if there's another place for that statue to be, and I wanted Brian to know that, that that was a push we had, was part of a peaceful demonstration in August, and they weren't listening, they weren't hearing us, but they're hearing today, so I think there's a move here, at least in Lake County. And also, we took part in the peace and equal justice, that was great, all of us were there, and I, I thought it was a great event for us and to show our commitment, so, and I still think, in Brian Urick's case, we should have probably a few more people representing here and being able to speak out like you did tonight, so thank you very much.
Karen, anything you'd like to report?
Oh, no, I'm good.
You're good? Ms. Emily?
I, I concur with Commissioner Moran, that going, having participated in the protest, peaceful protest on Saturday was an enlightening experience, I had some comments otherwise, but I guess I'll wait till it's appropriate.
You can go ahead if you want to.
Well, I, I did, I wrote some, some comments to myself, I was thinking about all of that's going on, I feel that I, I should say something because of how I feel about what we're experiencing, not only with the virus, but also with all of the racial tension that's going on, so, I, I like to write, so I, I like to write my, my thoughts down, and I, I did do that, and then, hearing Brian speak, it's like even more so I want to say some things that I wrote down. I believe even if we come from different backgrounds, belief systems are, have the similar ways of going about things, there are certain fundamental goals that should unify all of us, the first being that citizens and local government work together to create a safe community for all, we should all work together, find solutions to problems, and create a healthy and peaceful environment for our children. There's much strife and division in our country, the problem is too big for us to try to solve nationwide, but the citizens, our government, police, fire business, and faith community in Eustis can choose to work together and do what is right for our area. I believe if every city and county work together at the local level, a more positive change will come more quickly. I've had the opportunity to service Commissioner and Vice Mayor during this past year, as a result, I've come to learn that Eustis has great potential that is yet untapped, however, there are many areas of communication, past history, and mistrust that we have to overcome. I believe these perilous times will motivate us to address our issues and concerns as a community, and I pledge to work tirelessly to make these things happen as a citizen and through a fair and impartial government. We cannot do this without each of us making that commitment to work together, when we realize this, we'll have greater strength. Once we decide to work with and not against each other, it starts to become clear that unity creates power. After hearing that the county commissioners had made a decision to reject the statute coming to Taverys, I heard a lady say to a reporter, and I'm paraphrasing her statement, that she was thankful for the decision and believed that now we can all start over peacefully and work together to resolve the issues in the community. I've spoken to citizens at the protest on Saturday, and they would like to create a committee to start a dialogue and to work to make Eustis and Lake County a model for other communities, and I really hope that this can become a future reality, and I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners and the mayor for their support and commitment in unifying and making this one Eustis, thank you.
Thank you, Emily, thank you. Mr. Nybert?
Thank you, fireworks, when we last met, there was interest in doing the fireworks, we have a contract for fireworks show on the, July the 3, you asked for a plan to try and protect the public as best we can under the circumstances, so what we've come up with is we will have signage throughout the facility, both in and out, indicating to people to maintain social distancing, we're also going to, as part of the advertising of it, if we choose to do it, encourage people to go to other venues where you could see the fireworks, obviously, the lake walk is a good way for people to see the fireworks, and, and kind of spread out a little bit, and also, a really unknown place, which is a beautiful place to see the fireworks that a lot of people don't think about, is Sunset Island Park, you can see the show great from there, and so we can spread people out. Other things we're also going to do is we're going to have wash and sanitation stations in the park so people can wash their hands and sanitize their hands throughout the period. Now, keep in mind, we are just doing a fireworks show at 9 o'clock, there'll be no vendors, no bands, no beer tents, just show up, get a spot as best you can, six feet from your friends and neighbors, and watch the fireworks, going to encourage people to wear masks to do that, also, we've picked out some select areas in that where we're going to barricade it off, so to speak, we're going to have some taped areas, prohibited areas where people can stand, so that way, we'll create gaps in the crowd so that there can be some spacing between groups of people, and then hopefully, in those smaller groups, between the blocked out areas, that people will practice social so that there can be some spacing between groups of people, and then hopefully in those smaller groups, between the blocked-out areas, that people will practice social distancing. We're going to have a DJ there whose purpose is solely only to play music during the show and pre-show, but we're going to ask that DJ to make announcements about minding your social distancing throughout the event. So the question is, is that something you're comfortable moving forward with?
Well, my question is, will Farren Park even be done? I saw drone footage that hit Facebook this week, and I have concerns that it won't even be finished.
We met with the contractors today, and they have guaranteed us that it will be done by, in time for the show.
Okay. Marie, your feelings? Marie?
I, I just, I just don't feel comfortable with it. I, I, I am even more uncomfortable with it since we spoke a month ago. Um, so that's just where I'm at with it. You know, if they, if they disagree, you know, you can vote, you can vote the way you want. Um, I, I am normally the most optimistic person and unafraid person there is. But, um, my personal gut feeling tells me, um, I don't think this is something we should be doing, so I will just, um...
Okay. So you're enough?
Yeah, my voice is my vote, and I'm done.
All right, that's fine. Thank you. Bob?
I agree with Marie. I think, Marie, I agree with you too. I think things have changed so much, and today was the high point again in, in Florida. I think it's 3,200 cases. And in spite of the fact that people are denying some of those, it certainly doesn't mean that I'm not with my colleagues and city manager. But just from my own sense of, of looking at the dashboards, as I always did in my career, it's important for me to stay with that routine, and I'm going to vote no for it. And I, I appreciate all the attempts you've had, and if it does consider it, uh, pass and be a 3-2 vote, I won't be attending, but I will certainly not, uh, I, I certainly would, you know, hope that everything goes well, so. At this point, I'm not going to vote for it. Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you. Karen?
Do we have any idea what number of people the park will hold?
We haven't done it. Typically, in the past, when it's been completely full, we've estimated the crowd around 3,000 at most times. So if we encourage people to go to other venues, if we put these no-standing areas, obviously, we can keep the crowd down. The downside, though, is if 3,000 people still want to show up, the downside is now they have less space to stand in because we've blocked off certain areas. So there, there, there is, there is no perfect cure for this, or there, I can't guarantee 100% the effectiveness of this. We, we hope that people will do what they need to do to keep safe. We're taking the best efforts that we can make reasonably to minimize exposure.
Are we creating a police nightmare, honestly?
No.
No, the nightmare is only if we choose to force.
I mean, I think how, how, once it fills up, personally, I want the fireworks. That's my personal opinion. I may not be downtown at Farren Park to watch them, but I may choose an alternate place to go watch them. I can sit out in my street as long as nobody drives down it, see it over the trees, so. But I think that, you know, it's the Fourth of July weekend, and it's a huge part of what we, what we do. I'm going to vote yes, and I'm going to trust that the public will do what they should do.
I think that's a big part of it, too, is in our advertising, is to encourage people to watch from home if they can. Do not gather in city parks unless it's the only place you have to go. You know, I, I think that that's some encouragement we could do.
And another factor is, given that, as far as a lakefront fireworks show, we're the only ones doing it, we're anticipating a large amount of boats to be out on the water. We've already coordinated with the sheriff's office, and they've agreed to provide extra boat patrols out there on that evening to make sure that the boats are meeting the spacing requirements that are mandated by the governor's orders.
That's something that you mentioned. I don't think any other city is doing it, but Eustace is considering it.
I know Mount Dora was going to revisit it, and I don't...
They, they voted no.
Did they vote no?
They voted no. Leesburg is waiting to make a final decision here. The 22nd, so.
They're waiting for us, is what they're doing.
The la, the la, the last, the last I heard, and I haven't verified, that Groveland was going to do a show, two shows actually, but they weren't going to open up venues for people to watch. They were going to people, encourage people to stay at their homes and watch the shows from their homes. That's why they're doing two shows, so they could cover the, the whole city.
So what will happen, what I'm thinking is that people from Mount Dora will come in, you know, underlying areas and create more traffic because they can't probably watch from home. So do you think that would happen, and will that cheap, cause more problems, do you think? Have an abundance of people?
I, I think us being the only show in town will, will give people an opportunity that want to go see fireworks, an opportunity for them to come to Eustace and see fireworks, and I think people will take advantage of that.
Are we going to put our drone up? That you, we could livestream it on Facebook or something?
Yes, we can do that. Yes, we've talked about that.
And advertise that, that maybe you can watch from the comfort of your home?
We could also, in the old Waterman parking lot, which sounds like it will be ours soon, put cars facing the lake, change the parking design where people could wa, sit in their cars and watch some of the fireworks from there, right in their own car.
We even talked about to have more space is to close the parking in Farren Park. But the problem is, is if people know the park's going to be open, it'll create traffic problems. Because not everybody's going to get the word that the parking in the park is closed, and we'll have traffic issues, so. Also, if there's cars, there's less app to be more people in there, and hopefully people would sit in their cars and watch the show. So, uh, like I said, there's no, there's no perfect cure. There's no, uh, every option that we throw, there's another scenario to consider, so.
Are we talking about like a 15-minute show, or?
Probably, probably about 20 minutes, because we, we were actually spending a little bit more since we didn't have some other, other events. And, uh, we usually do $10,000, and it's about a 15-minute show, so we're figuring maybe a 20, 22-minute show, because we're spending $15,000.
You still it okay?
Yeah, I am.
Emily?
I have mixed feelings about it. I wish it were a little closer. I mean, things, the numbers are increasing. And would it be possible for us to consider, I would, I would probably consider it, if, if it really gets bad and the numbers are really rising, that we don't have it?
Well, we have to make a decision tonight, because we have, we have to give notice to the, to the contractor. So unfortunately, tonight's decision-making night.
Can I maybe add to what you're saying, too? We don't usually do anything for Labor Day. Maybe we could postpone it for Labor Day, but just thinking about this. We're all going to have to live with COVID-19 for a long time. I don't think there's a solution here in hand. So we have to figure out what that life is going to be like for municipal government, what's it going to be like for us personally. And I think we need to build on that. And I think from my perspective, if even if we delayed our observation of July 4th or that holiday, on a larger holiday, Labor Day, with hopefully Farren Park finished, I know, I know they're talking about on time, but that's always kind of skeptical. But I think we all, actually, as a commission, need to figure out what government, what are we going to do as we move forward with this? We're not going to, this is not going to get any better, it seems. So, from my perspective, I prefer to delay it until maybe Labor Day. In the meantime, develop a plan that we have as we, a continuity, continuity of operations. I don't know if we have one here. Do we have one for the city? I, I know we do have one for the city.
I mean, we're, I, I mean, we're, we're, other than we, we have more restrictions in place, where we're still asking people to social distance. We made some major changes to our summer day camp programs. Our normal operations are still operating as they were before. And at this point, we, internally here in City Hall, we've had no issues.
I'm, I'm thinking even, but even beyond the government itself, is how we think the city's going to get through this whole pandemic for, for a long time to come. So that's my perspective. I certainly don't want to belabor it, but it's just for us to think about as, as we move forward here. I always liked working with numbers. The dashboard that we're talking about that talks to us about what's really happening is the kind of things we need to pay attention to, and if we don't, it makes it...
Given the, I wasn't 100% sold last time. I had concerns, and my concerns are more now, given the increases in cases. So I, I'm more concerned about it now than I was a month ago.
Yeah.
But I will do whatever I can based on your guys' decisions.
It's in your court, yes or no?
And it keeps us, we're still a commission that's, works well together. It's just our sense about what we think is going to happen. So I think it's good to, to speak our minds, to say, you know, that's, and I think it's an alternative to wait until, uh, Labor Day and, and plan it all out, so. I don't need to continue to talk about it.
Mayor? I'm waiting on Emily.
What do you think?
I, I, my personal would be to move ahead.
Okay.
Is to go forward with it. People are out doing all different kinds of things, and I think that, that my personal opinion is people need to have some ownership in what they do to stay healthy and to stay well. And I, I, I do believe that we need to go ahead and, and celebrate the Fourth of July. That, that's my personal opinion, and that's not, it brings something down to anybody else, okay? Please vote your heart and conscience, and I've said that in every time we've been in here. Please vote what you feel in your heart, okay?
My, my dilemma is that I feel that, um, if I had to make the choice, for me, I'd say probably not. However, there is such a somber time and just something to lift people's spirits. But on the other hand, I don't want people to get injured in the process. So I guess what I would say is, for the good of those who, who are the, the, the city, the commission, I mean, the citizens who might want to enjoy it, who may need it, I would say yes, you know, but...
And we can mandate mask. We can put those things in force, okay?
We're, at this point, we're encouraging, now, if we mandate the mask, then we have to ask ourselves, and then obviously the people, the staff working there, how vigorously do you want to enforce the mask, um, regulation? And there's been, there's been a lot of debate and argument regarding...
Whether it does anything.
Whether, well, I mean, I'm not talking about effectiveness, about local government mandating, you know, behavior.
Yeah, I think one of our neighboring counties decided to do that tonight. They just decided today to, you have to wear masks to be out.
Yeah, as, as a, to me, as a city government, we need to address it and be always cognizant of it. And I would hope that if any of our, um, staff were out there, that they would wear masks and gloves and be prepared, you know, to...
Lead by example.
All, all, all staff who will work the event will wear masks, so that, that will happen. I can do that. The public's, the public's another matter.
We can encourage it, don't we?
At this, at this point, our recommendation, given the volatility of the mask issue, is to strongly encourage people to wear the masks. And, you know, I've thought about it. It's, this commission is making a decision in putting its reputation and the safety of its residents. And, um, we should ask those residents that if you make that positive decision, that we are making a decision to help you enjoy your lives. Please make us proud and, and make this event safe and do this. Don't, don't make us regret the decision that we made by having these fireworks, by not doing the best you can to make this safe for all involved. And that's, that was my thought process.
I thought they did a really good job at the protest. People had the masks on, and they were socially distancing themselves without anyone saying or encouraging them to. They did it. So, um, I would, I guess I would go along with having it, under those circumstances.
Okay. You sure?
Say again? I, I missed what you said.
She's going to go ahead with it.
Okay. It's your choice. I still think there's an option. I still think you can move it to Labor Day. You have to be more prepared, and hopefully you'll be on a downswing, so.
Well, let's pursue that. How do you guys feel about Labor Day?
I mean, that's all...
Well, actually, we were looking at doing it at light up. We don't have a Labor Day event, and just, just to have fireworks is okay. But it makes more sense for the, for the Fourth of July, just to have fireworks. Other towns are doing it on Labor Day, are having Labor Day fireworks, but we don't have a Labor Day event, so our plan was to move it to light up and have a bigger light up.
And knowing that you're concerned about it makes me sense the same thing. That's what, that's what makes me...
I like that, I like that idea. Um, I like that idea, special light up.
Yeah, that's great, too.
But, but I, 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 as much as anybody, want the world to get back to normal as well, and, and I want to feel a little bit of normalcy as well. I underst, it's, it's, it's a difficult decision. There's, like I said earlier, there's no right or wrong decision here. We just, we make a decision, and we do the best we can. Obviously, the easy decision from safety standpoint is to say no. Obviously, the quality of life and trying to get people to feel better about living adds some responsibility to us. But it also adds the responsibility to the people that are going to partake, and we, if we're, like I said, if we're going to do this and put the trust in the community to make us proud, then, then, then that, we can do that, and we'll, we'll make it as safe as we can.
I have one more option to throw out there, too. You know, my neighborhood and my surrounding neighborhoods all do their own fireworks anyway, like for days. I mean, ask any dog in the neighborhood. Um, you know, this, this may be the year to have your own fireworks. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I know the governor's rescinded the agricultural exemption.
You know, by firework.
That thing anyway for years.
Yeah, it may not be the year.
All right. So two to two. You still saying with your yes?
Yes.
Three to two. We're going to go ahead with the Fourth of July, on the third. July on the third. Anything else, Mr. Nyberg?
I have one thing. Obviously, uh, commission meetings, how we operate. The governor's current order on operating commission meetings expires June 30th, so absence and extension of that executive order. Now, we can still mandate social distancing and attendance requirements. That's a local determination. But the actual attendance of commissioners, unless he extends the order, expires on June 30th, so all commissioners, to be part of the quorum, will have to physically be present. The other thing, given, I want to thank everybody for their thoughts and prayers and calls during my recent illness of the well-known ailment.
Thank you, Mr. Nyberg.
And you're not even 70 years old.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
I, I just had a few, a few things to say. With everything that spins around us, COVID, the, the murder of, of, of the gentleman. You know, I look back at our history as a community, and I have to tell you, I'm very proud of our community. We did the peaceful march. We, we did it as a group. When you look at our history and know how bad things were at one time here, are they where they need to be? No, no. But have we come a long way? Yes, we have. There are three things that I want to encourage Eustace and Lake County to do. We need to continue to communicate with each other. We need to educate each other. We need to understand what happened years ago and where we're headed. And then we need to love each other. I think that's the most important thing we can do. Brian and I can have disagreements all day long, but Brian knows I love him, and I'll fight to the death for him. And, and it's always been that way. And I think if we can do that as a community, we survive, and we're strong, and we grow a better community. Another thing I want to tell our police department is I do support our police department 100%. I am not for defunding police departments. I'm for making our police departments better through education and for giving them the tools they need to do their job properly and to be able to work and communicate with our citizens in a proper manner. If we defund police departments, we're going to have total chaos. But our job is to teach and to educate and to work together to make things better. So everybody that puts on a uniform, whether they're police officers, firefighters, EMTs, thank you for what you do. Thank you for helping make our community strong. We need to communicate, educate, and love each other, and we will survive everything that's...
that's in front of us. Thank you all for being with us tonight. Thank you for those who joined us over the internet. We're adjourned.
Mayor, I have one more thing. Just real quickly, because I can't go home if I don't ask this question. There's a question about the senior breakfast. When is it going to start again?
You mean the, the senior group?
Yes.
Well, they usually, they, they usually take a summer vacation anyway.
Okay, so they're not having it till...
No, I mean, they, they usually, when school was out, they usually stopped the breakfast.
They stopped the breakfast because our summer camp needs the space at that time, so they go back to school.
The plan is, the plan is to re-implement their program in the fall when it normally starts up again, when school starts.
Make sure there are donuts.
Yeah.
They have, they have, they...
Good night, everybody. Be safe.